All right, the meeting is called to order. The Runny Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Baron Hall, Runny Post Office, Marygold School, Alliance Bingham School, Crease Downing School, and Runny Public School District website. Roll call of board members?
Patricia Daire. Angel Beebe.
Here.
Charles Buckeye.
Here.
Naomi Davison.
Here.
Maria Panzarella.
Patricia Smith.
Here.
Samantha Spaulding.
Here.
Lynn Torrello.
Here.
John Wark. We have a forum also present, our superintendent, Mark, and myself.
Maria Panzarella is coming in now. Dr. McCarron is here, and Butch is also here, just for our records. Before we go over the agenda and talk about some housekeeping items, Mr. I would like to introduce-
Mr. Palavita is here to do the audit summary review slash what he does every year, of course. I know he's on a tight schedule this evening, so I want to thank you for coming tonight-
Thank you.
...and giving his presentation, and hopefully, and he keeps it short and sweet. At least that's what he told us.
Hopefully, because I will entertain questions. Thank you. Surprised I do have two meetings in my schedule. First of all, I want to remind everyone and for any member that there are three phases to your audit. There's a financial phase, which has to do with the dollars, balance sheet, income statement, and all the other financial matters. And there's a second phase of just compliance, you must follow the federal, State of New Jersey, and local ordinances. There are compliance supplements which we must follow in addition to my customized law appropriations to doing the school board. And there's a third phase, you must run a school in a business like fashion, and you must have procedures and follow them, and we do check them. Now, you did that three-phase audit on your CAPR, comprehensive annual financial report. And while we prepare for you, it's your responsibility, and all the numbers and the demographic information is in there. The smaller document is called management report et cetera, but it's really your audit report. This is where we put the findings. Now, your statutory requirement is to understand the findings and request a corrective action plan and approve your audit. Now, and the corrective action, we have plenty of time, and unfortunately, we don't have much to report. Now, going through the document, I'm sure you've heard of it before many times, what we check, and I'm going to highlight the one finding on page five. For some time now, State of New Jersey and the federal government have an extremely, I want to use the word ridiculous, format where the fiscal year is different, Simon must say nay I to move it, there's something called encumbrances where if you order something and you don't receive the goods, it just makes a mess out of the simplistic accounting system that was made up in England six hundred years ago or whatever. But the effective action is really going to be that the old government in State of New Jersey have finally moved to do 30th for the schools, and they're finally encouraging the schools not to have encumbrances in orders to close them before the end of the year, and to rid ourselves once and for all of this encumbrance and difference in the fiscal years. And I'm a very happy camper about that information. Your district has three buildings, the type of their child left behind, and now you have. It can be complex on the line people, your coordinators, your business office, any of those things. And we have had a heck of a time probably for the last five years. Accounting system, System 3000 is one of the most comprehensive, but it is also at times, depending on who's using it, the descriptions can make it a little more daunting. There's nothing wrong with the system, but it allows you to get in trouble with the descriptions. And you had that problem about four years ago, and we've been moving out of that, but this year we still have where the reports that were generated were not in sync with the E-Wing reports of the State of New Jersey. It was August Ian and myself, spent a couple of days rerouting everything to where we have reimbursement requests that pretty much equal very closely to what is in your CAPR. That's a good thing. But because I had to do it during the audit, I must report that to you. Now, during the course of the audit, there are going to be many other little things that we bump into, but nothing requiring a comment. And your records are very good, and of course, you know, we've had a change. So, for internal control purposes, I want to stress that the grants, the grants are really an issue, that someone with accounting expertise ensure that the grants line up because that's what the federal state government wants. Now, I'm the backstop, I do check, we check. With that said, your statutory requirement will be fulfilled. You only have one finding, and that's very good, and it is a truthful report, and we will check the accountants. However, your next budget's going to be difficult, and I want to just take a minute, as busy as you are. I want to remind you, we're, about two years ago, three years ago, we had a really rough budget from, because of the surplus that you built up through your austerity measures, we put a lot in the budget this past year. It's very difficult to generate that much money for a subschool year. And then, I'm in practice of watching out, and you're answering. So, I'm letting you know, unless they increase, you stay funding. We're arriving recently, and have a difficult budget again. And I've already had some discussions with superintendent and this administrator, and I'm willing to come over and sit someday, and sometimes the sound may be more disappallable. You're not going to be charged for it on substance. If they invite me, I'm always willing, and I'm willing to demonstrate, so. With that said, if there are any questions regarding what I said about the audit work, what I said about the budget, I'd be happy to entertain them. I do want to encourage you to maintain reserves, capital, because your debt has, because of where your debt is in time, goes up and it goes down, you need to maintain your reserves. And so, the state allows you to have them. We've had discussions about that also. And again, I'm always available, don't even avoid me, if there's any call, I'm always willing to come over. You know that person.
I have a question. So, are you saying that because you were able to be very cautious with our spending, and we have a surplus, chances are, we're going to be funded less next year?
No.
Okay.
No, what, you have two things to worry about. Number one, because you save the money up, you had it for the 13, 14 budget. So, you put a lot of money in there, it's seven hundred thousand something, a lot of money. Common sense tells me, not facts, but common sense tells me, you might have a hard time building that much money for the next year. So, you'd be setting yourself up for a spike in the rate in the CAPR. We don't want that. So, at this moment, right now, personally, and I'm quite experienced in this, I don't have enough information to see that you would not have this potential. Mr. Zallem might have more information than I do, since I spoke with him last. And again, I'd be willing to sit down anytime with anyone to take a peek at it as you go through the budget process within the next month. The second thing is, the State of New Jersey's changed some of their rules. This next year, they might, as you remember, they came after some of the reserves a few years ago. Well, I heard a little stuff about they might be having a procedure, a policy that may indicate that they could move to that if they need to, for the 15-year vote. So, I don't have all the info on it, but I always look, and anything I find, yeah, I look at all the districts, all the districts now. So, yeah, you took austerity measures, it worked, and there were a lot of cuts, tough decisions, you built the money up, but you've been spending, and it's asking you to help me up. You can only spend that dollar one time, and the next year, you've got to find that dollar again, because you don't want to be cutting, but you want to be cutting too much more. So, I don't think there's anything else that I could add, other than to say, the surplus use has been quite impressive, and I don't know if it's going to be there for the next year. And I think a dialogue and extra analysis in the business office, I'll be dealing with the vice president's side, whatnot, the superintendent's, and I'm saying this, I'm willing to sit down. You know, as a Sam, you have no choice. As long as you don't hit anywhere near April 15.
We'll be done waiting for that.
My last busy season ended last week off. I'm still running meetings every night, but my busy season just ended, and now I have a few weeks to enjoy working with the districts on Saturday. Yours was, you know, a little daunting, sort of a little, it was a happy season, but it always worked out fine, so I want you to know, everything is fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just that I did prepare a corrective action plan. I think each of you should have it, a material plan. And basically, you know, we're, the corrective action is going to be the procedures to record the revenues and expenditures are going to be looked at, and make sure that the people who are handling those activities are diligent in their work, and then we have some potential changes in staffing that are going to allow for a system of checks and balances in the board office that will allow more than one person to look at what's being recorded, so that there's a second set of eyes, and hopefully, if there are any inappropriate or incorrect postings, that those can be corrected during the year, rather than have Mr. Palavita's firm have to do it at the end of the year.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I know you have another meeting you go to, so we thank you for coming here during our-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to find a comment if I may?
Sure.
That was internal control. When you have change, your controls are a little bit under stress because of change. So, you're putting more controls in right at the right time. And that, I don't know if you can understand what you're saying, that, because that bolsters internal control that will go down along those way.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you all. Have a nice holiday.
Enjoy the next couple of weeks of commerce.
Yes, ma'am.
Bye-bye. I did, I didn't, there was not really much else to go over, except to go through the So, at this time, we will look and see if there's any questions under any of the reports, secretaries' reports, superintendent, principal report.
The only thing I want to make in the superintendent's report, I'd love to just make that to look in. I put in my superintendent's report about the ROD grant, schools, the ROD grant's only awarded so far to Bingham, so it was not awarded yet to Volts and Downing. Why? Maybe you seem to know why. I'll talk to Dr. Fett, and he said it could be weeks-
Weeks or months.
Weeks or months, until we find that information out. So, that's what we, that's what the discussion is on, which gets, yeah. Over there, where we're going to proceed as far as, you know, the improvements over Bingham, plus, you know, Volts and Downing as well, as far as education is concerned, so maybe waiting to hear more information about that.
Give you a reason, Mr. Wine?
They'll send you a letter, they'll send you a letter, and they tell you that you've been awarded for Bingham. Which doesn't make any sense, because Dr. Fett talked earlier, the application was all application, and it all fell in the-
Do all, are all preschools listed on the application?
Yes. Yeah, I think we got a copy of that earlier in the year, when, I don't know, you got a lot of stuff. And everything was basically on, on application, so we're waiting to hear. So, that was the only thing to speak from the superintendent's report. And then, I have a correction to make to, or comment to make to the party workshops, but I'll wait until we get that one.
Was there any other comments or concerns about any of the reports? We can also wait till other principals are here as well. Property and transportation, there was one item added.
Yeah, the, the school facilities use that was added, Volts gym. There's a question about, your facility use application requires that the person using the gym or facility hold harmless the Board of Education and the New Jersey School Board of Insurance Group, who's your insurance carrier.
Right.
In this particular request, the insurance carrier doesn't provide the hold harmless insurance. So, this activity may or may not go on, depending on whether they can get a carrier to provide them the insurance that contains a hold harmless provision.
Okay. Yep, but it's on there in case they correct-
So, that's why we had a pending certification of the insurance.
Okay. Personnel, there was just one, or actually, two substitutes. Finance, some workshops, you need to speak about that.
Just the one, the TechSpo workshop, I have one there, you're going to see, there's various beneficiaries going. I am not actually going to TechSpo, so scratch my name off the list. Jeanette obviously goes as the technology coordinator, and Dr. McCarron, Mrs. Yessi, Mr. Pille, so it's like they split the dates. So, like in the past, I would go on Thursday, Mr. Pille would go on Friday. So, it's just basically, not seven people going to that, it's basically only three. So, it's just going to be Jeanette, so we're basically paying for three, not seven, so I was just thinking, you know, all of us are going down there, whatever, it's just the way we break it up, you know. Similar to what you went to at school boards a little bit, some of the stuff, the workshops you can go to, some of the vendors and things like that, but we're all not going down. I'm not going down there, but Jeanette will be there both days, Sean will be there one day, Jay will be there the next day, and then the same thing with Mr. Pille, Mr. Pille's back. So, that was the only correction, I want to let you know, so it's not, everybody going.
All right.
A question about the workshops for training. The two of you, have you given any thought to what was talking about at the last meeting we had about training for the board office, agent personnel for the system?
Yes, we actually were going to wait until we have that position we spoke about-
Gotcha.
-last meeting-
Okay.
-filled, and then we'll come out probably, hopefully, sometime in early February. Apparently, we get, bring this person in, I think January was their busy month.
January's a busy month because of the payroll setups and all that kind of thing-
Sure, sure.
-with the new, putting into the program all the new tax rates and all that kind of stuff. But they assured me that they would make themselves available in February.
Okay.
And what they're going to do, rather than do a mass training, they would rather spend an hour or two with each individual person, and with a person who's going to be cross-trained in that particular function.
Okay.
So, that they're working on real data, it's not hypothetical stuff.
I like that. And then, we have like a, like a hotline where we could call, like if-
There always is a hotline.
Ask, have a question?
Yeah, that's-
Good.
Is that any of the programs we use right now?
Good.
Computer support, tax support, all the time.
Good.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, under property transportation, I may miss this last year, I remember seeing this, I think it's a wonderful thing, the little girl and her guy, the little guy and his girl, is that like the mom, the boss of the box?
Yes. Last year was a father, it was a father.
Last year, it was father, daughter, yes.
I think that's wonderful.
It was, it's a big hit, the PTA. I think the first time they did it, when they did it with the little boys and their moms, or the little dads, there was over 120.
Yeah.
And then they did something, so they're going to, they're going to continue to do that every year, and the PTA can talk about that more, but it's fab, it's really fun. I get to come this year, too, with my little guy. They're going to let me in, they didn't let me in last year.
What was guys' night?
Last year, it was guys' night, they switched it. I said, I was waiting for this time, and they switched it to guys' night. But it's, it's something that, we get a ton of people out for that, and it's just a nice-
It's a whole activity.
It's a nice, I mean, I know growing up, my, my cousins who lived in Pennsylvania and went to like all girls or all boys Catholic schools, they always had like a father, daughter dance, or a mother, son dance, and it was like a yearly event that they really looked forward to, kind of like a prom. But this is low key, but a lot of fun for little guys. It's, it's super cool.
Hey, Dr. McCarron, are you ready to start seeing them? The 21st.
He's seen them red.
I come on the 21st.
You have to dance with each of the little girls before the-
You come on the 21st?
He's bringing his dog.
Oh, good.
She's bright, she'll walk.
Oh, she'll have a ball.
Preschool age, she'll have a-
Oh, yeah, she'll have a ball, the little DJ, they play fun.
She'll wear a Red Sequins dress.
Yes. You don't have to have a Red Sequins bow tie.
He had a Red Sequins dress.
I'm all Red, thank you.
No, we got a match.
Sharon thinks studies work has ponies out, so you know, from the media ministry.
It's like a bow tie because it's round balance, and they've been, and they've lined up, they have green ones for-
No, you're, you are absolutely correct, Josh. It's a wonderful thing to get a lot of the parents involved, and, and you know, it doesn't have to be a parent, it could be a grandparent, or aunt, uncle, whoever, there's, you know, who, that's why it's not mother, son, it's, you know, little guy and his girl, like, you know, he gets to really pick, you know? Maybe it's a man or someone, you know? It's nice.
Right.
There was also some things added to finance, number five and number six, just so you know.
That's basically, number five is a corrective action plan, which is actually gray. We had that with us.
I have a comment about number four. This is another homeless. I need to make sure that our board office and our superintendents are aggressively going through, situate when people register, whoever's in charge of registering these students, because that's what's happening here. If people are moving because of financial situations, loss of township, and other districts are getting them to say that they are moving in with someone else because they're quote-unquote homeless, and then we're paying them, we need to make sure in turn, that when someone's moving here because of financial situations too, that we are going after the school districts, like they are coming after us, because this is a lot of money.
We did tweak sort of laws to state that, because I know we did send out suit kids-
But it's almost like there has to have, I mean, I know that everybody's busy, but whoever, is there one person in charge of registering, or is it each secretary?
Each secretary is in charge, but everything is repeated. That's why I said, we did make some changes in that registration form, in conjunction with Mr. Madison, our office DA's on, so that she's done to look for certain things.
I'm just saying, in the past six months, this has happened more than it has in the past nine years I've been on the board. So, we need to make sure that we're aggressively doing the same.
I will advise you that this is not uncommon, I've been in many districts over the past seven years, and because of the economy-
Right.
-this is happening all over the place.
Yes.
It's, it's not uncommon to find, especially where there's a single parent family, moving back home with their parents for financial reasons.
There's a lot of, lot of vacant homes in Runny, so you, but they got to be going somewhere.
But that's exactly where I think somebody's point's coming in at, and I could be completely wrong about this, it'll all look a little different when it comes to a school district, that someone who is homeless, in my mind, is someone that literally has no faith to go-
It's different with school.
Somebody who's knowing someone's home.
Different. If I, if I lost my job and I had to come live with you, I could say, technically, the school district would consider me homeless, but I'm living with you in a beautiful home.
Bringing you home.
Yeah.
A lot of hope shows up.
It's different, it's a different terminology.
So, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, when our people are leaving, other people who are coming in, it's the same situation. We need to be billing the district's-
We are coming home.
Yes.
We, we are billing other districts, okay, that have left, what do we need, and then out, any of this.
I just want to, I just wanted to say that publicly, because when I saw that at, when I saw that over the weekend, you know, again, it's really been, it's like four or five now.
What's it, when a person, say, a Runny person moved out of Runny because they're homeless and they're living in loss of township?
Yes.
And they still want to attend Runny schools, then we would have to cover the cost of the transportation.
Transportation.
Now, what's even more difficult on a school district is about a year ago, they changed some of the residence rules, where after a person is homeless, living in your district for one, four years, they're now your financial responsibility. However, they're still homeless, so they still have the option to go to school in the district of last residence, and it could be miles away, and you're still responsible to pay the tuition for them to go to their old school and transport them.
Yep, I remember one time that we had, they were obviously 18 and 17 years old, they moved to Williamstown, and we, they didn't have a bus, we paid for a cab to pick them up, bring them to Triton, and drop them off every day, gave a cab. It was our responsibility. And people, teachers would be like, why is there a cab every day? Well, it's, our responsibility is cheaper, believe it or not, than getting a bus.
In the first year, you could transfer those costs back to the home district.
Right.
But after that, they're your costs.
Couldn't we have bought them a tricycle?
So, Williamstown-
In my case, it's cheaper buying a house.
Great, great shape physically.
Yeah, you, I get it, I get it. But no, unfortunately, we could not do that.
It's so true.
It is true. I just want to make sure that, you know, and I get why everybody's doing it, because everybody's in the same place, but you know, we're trying to couple districts around here, and one district for multiple students, and I just want to make sure we're doing the same. That's all. Moving along to curriculum, there's four, there's a home ban instruction, some of a trap, and course approval.
What is CCTS for these A grade students?
County county technical school.
Okay.
One of the greatest schools in the State of New Jersey. You need plumbers, carpenters, architects, nurses, fakers, chefs, honor.
Does anybody have any questions on the agenda?
Yes, are we scheduled for a session?
We will not, we will not be going into executive session this evening. On another note, before we adjourn out of the work session, and Maria goes and takes care of business for 20 minutes and comes back-
No, actually, I have a couple of comments before we break.
Go ahead.
No, you said before, go ahead.
Well, no, 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 I just had a couple of housekeeping things, and for personal reasons, I needed to like talk about the meetings the next couple of months. Like the reorg meeting that's on a Tuesday, I'd like to switch that to the Monday, if possible. Just for selfish reasons, because I work on Tuesday and Thursday nights, and I don't want to give up that stipend that I make when I'm there. Plus, it interferes with the local mayor and council.
It does.
And I'd like to, I'd like to stay away from that, so if we could move that to that, to that Monday, the 6th, instead, if anybody had a problem with that.
That, I would not be in at the meeting if it was Tuesday, just so you know, so that actually works better for me. Not that I really care, but I would not.
I have my council.
What is the date? When we start in January?
Around January, I would, I, it's, right now, we're scheduled for some reason for the 7th, and I know we can't go later than that because of some of the different things.
The law, the law.
The law, so-
It has to be in the first week.
So, if you were available, Earl-
Yes.
-on the 6th, and if everybody else was available, and we would call Amy, make sure she's available, well, just tell her she needs to be available, she'll be fine.
Patty.
Patty, yeah. I just don't think we should have the same night as the mayor council.
You still want to do it at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, I-
There's no work session scheduled before that, correct? This is just-
This is just a meeting, I mean, I can do a 6 o'clock, I can do, I can do 6, I prefer earlier. I don't, I don't know about you guys.
6 o'clock?
I agree.
Let's do 6 o'clock.
Not, not Patty, and of course, Amy.
Amy will make it happen.
I'm not here, I can call, well, yeah. 1:00, 6:00, and 6 o'clock for reorg. The only other thing that I was going to say is, I started taking the classes, and I have to, again, the first seven weeks, you know, starting with January, February, I have to- I have to. I would, I, I may not be here, I just wanted to let everyone know that. And it, and it may run into a problem again. Currently, spring 2, I'm scheduled for Tuesdays and Thursday evenings, but I might have to switch that to a Wednesday evening. So, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up with that. And, you know, I don't know what's going to happen at the reorg meeting, but I just wanted to make everybody aware that I'm not just skipping out on meetings, that I have a class. And if the classes continue to be on Wednesday, and I can't be here, then either we have to switch it, or I have to resign. So, I just wanted to give you guys plenty of notice for that.
Now, what's the tentative date for?
What's, what's, what are the tentative dates for January, February that you're concerned
about?
Well, it's, I, I give a school on Wednesday evenings. So, it would be, it would be our board meetings.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so you would miss the January, and you would miss the February.
Right, but what I, but, and this is, and this is, I hate to do this, but it's, it's, you know, I have to deal with the entire board. I, I work, I work night works on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so I've been taking like classes on Monday and Wednesday, or Wednesday and Friday, because with my husband being out of work, me working at night is helping us. So, right now, I'm scheduled for Tuesday and Thursday class from March to May, but then that means I can't work Tuesday and Thursday night. So, I have to probably rearrange that schedule, if possible via the college, because I want to do both, I want to go to school and work. I have to, for my family. So, I'm going to try and take a Friday evening class, because I never do anything on Fridays. So, it's been like Mondays have been my, Mondays are mine, I, I never do anything on Mondays, I cook dinner, and cook dinner for like three, three nights.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, I, I will know, I was going to look at this over break, I would know more at the reorg meeting, but I wanted to give you guys plenty of notice about it, that.
Well, don't concern yourself.
Well, we can do that at the reorg meeting, yeah. At the reorg meeting, that's when we usually, I'm not, I actually did it all semester, and I finished two courses, and I was okay, I'm okay with it, I'm not, I do like to sleep in on Saturday and Sunday mornings.
Now, are you physically going to school, or are you going online?
I don't go online, I like to go there, I'm not, I don't feel like I'm a good online learner. I need someone to, I like to go there, I like the group work, I like to, I like the interaction.
So, I'm saying, do you have that option, you can do that, if your schedule gets so crazy between trying to work during the day, work at night, go to class, is it possible?
January to February, I'm taking an online course and a Wednesday evening course. So, that was, that's, so I am trying it. So, that's why I may be okay, and I'm going to switch my schedule, I'll, I'll know by the reorg meeting on the 6th. But that is, yeah. And I won't be going to school again after, after May.
You'll be done?
I'll be done.
Yes, we're going to put just the meetings up in February, and what's your next, next month?
Possibly, we'll know more at the reorg meeting. I just wanted to, it's been, it's, soon as I registered for classes, it started bothering me, so I wanted to just let everybody know. And then, I also wanted to change the reorg meeting, because I just don't think that, I don't feel like we should, we should be on the same day. So, we're all going to Monday, then I feel like we should do that. Because I know we have a lot of active people on this board, that will probably be a boot, so.
Also, it doesn't drag on what the.
And don't forget the zoning board meeting.
What is that?
He withdrew his application.
Suggest, he would.
He withdrew his application.
The guy that wanted to put it all?
He withdrew his application.
Well, you say he, who wanted to put, put all?
The developer.
Wanted to put all those houses down.
He withdrew his application, it's a dead issue.
Wow.
Praise the Lord.
Can you get, is that proof? Is it, be approved of that? Four hours of my life.
Four hours of your life, you guys were all silly for going. All you have to do is ask me, I go to every mayor council meeting, everybody made this big statement, if you ever really want to know anything, just give me a call. There was no need to go to that meeting, hence why I wasn't there. There, at no point during that meeting was anybody going to ever have the ability to speak. That, that planning board is required to, you know, to, to, they, they were applying for a variance that they were never going to get. They wanted a high-density variance in a medium-density area, it was never going to happen. But all that being said, all you had to do was call me, and I told you, don't waste those four hours of your life.
I don't, I don't, I can't agree 100%, because their attorney.
Yes.
Said that the, it was a federal case, that our variance was not legal. And they were being, and I think, I think by us going, and I'm going to be, but I think by us going.
Intimidated them to the point where.
They knew there were residents that weren't happy with the situation.
Absolutely.
And let me tell you something right now, our retired employees of this district are still at it.
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Cavalero, Mrs. Heard, who both live back there, are still actively, I've been in contact with both of them, they are still actively, they, uh, kind, kind.
He withdrew his application, done.
They're still actively, you know, we're, we're one of them.
Yeah.
Chaz, I heard it was you, Chaz, I love it.
Yeah.
Good for you.
He was, he's just in trouble, he needed money.
Absolutely.
He's got, he's the guy that, he's, all the dams in, the dam in Metford that nurtured him, he loved all those people who were in trouble with that, and he just needed money.
Absolutely.
And he thought it was going to be the best way to get it.
And it didn't work out for him, it cost him so much money to do this.
Legal stuff, and then some, they all, they have like three or four different companies.
Correct. All different names.
All different names.
Yep, 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 yep.
Sure.
Didn't work out, hot on.
So, no, that's.
Our year's question for.
A fourth name, a fourth name, yeah, yeah, a fourth name.
All right.
So, we will, yeah, so we will then change our reorg meeting till January 6th at 6:00 PM. And at this time, if there's not anything further, we will adjourn till 7 o'clock.
One thing?
Yes.
As our delegate representative to the New Jersey School Board Assembly, and I think we're doing well, based on the report on our, our goals for the year, because you gave a review of how things are going. At the meeting when I was up there, one of the things the executive director emphasized with a lot of velocity, first tone, and that is, he strongly, strongly recommends that school districts do a mid-year assessment of the progress of the superintendent towards the goals. I don't think it's a problem, it looks like we're doing fine, but I just wanted to just mention it again, that, that midpoint would be January.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
And district goals or board goals? Um, I believe it's the district, district goals, I'll, I'll double check. And also, he emphasized that every board member that's eligible should be sitting on that review committee, to do the evaluation. They did, he did state that board members who have relatives that works in the district, or have children going to the school, the district, can serve on that committee, but he was, he was like, ugh.
So, you're saying that they don't want anyone who has children in the district to?
Or, or a relative of this employee, no, you can't.
Wouldn't have any relatives.
No. You can still serve, but he said a cleaner review group is people from the board that don't have those connections.
It'd be two of us.
A child or a friend.
Uh-uh, one, two, three, four, and Patty doesn't have any, anymore.
Right.
So, there would be five of us.
So, that the public wouldn't think there was any, how do you come?
No, yeah, I understand.
So.